See a point in time, we shall get started with the session on transport. Members may raise their hand through the Zoom system to allow members to speak in an orderly and fair manner. The existing raised hand markers will be cleared. Members who intend to speak, please press the raise hand function in the Zoom system. I would now invite Secretary for Transport and Housing, Mr. Chan, to speak. At the last session, you spent thirteen minutes in your opening speech, please be succinct this time. Thank you very much. Chairman. The government takes forward trap transport infrastructure projects under the infrastructure led and capacity creating planning approach. Chairman, I shall say again. The government takes forward transport infrastructure projects under the infrastructure led and capacity creating planning approach with a view to unleashing the development potential of new development areas along the alignment of major transport infrastructure as well as accommodating the transport demand arising from population intake, employment and economic activities of the new development areas. The government would adopt various implementation strategies and enhance contractual arrangements, including early contract involvement in with a view to expediting the progress of transport infrastructure projects. Railway systems has been the backbone of Hong Kong's public transport. The remaining works of the Shatin to Central Link is in full swing with the East Rail Line cross harbor extension expected to commission in the middle of the year. On the other hand, the environmental impact assessment of Northern Link and Hongshui Q station has commenced. Following the settlement of the railway schemes for Tongchung Line extension and Tin Moon South extension in N twenty twenty one and early this year respectively, the railway scheme of Kootong Station under N O L Phase One will also be set later this month. We will continue the planning of other new railway projects recommended under the Railway Development Strategy twenty fourteen and announce the way forward of the projects and its due cost. The policy address unveiled the northern metropolis development strategy which proposed to implement five new railway projects. Among these projects, the three cross boundary railway projects will be pursued through the task force for Hong Kong Shenzhen Corporation on cross boundary railway infrastructure. We did not quite hear you just a moment ago, please continue. Perhaps I would start from the beginning of the paragraph. The policy address unveiled the northern metropolis development strategy which proposed to implement five new railway projects. Among these projects, the three cross boundary railway projects will be pursued through the task force for Hong Kong Shenzhen Corporation on cross boundary railway infrastructure jointly established by the governments of Hong Kong and Shenzhen. The S A L government has requested the M T R Corporation Limited to submit the technical and financial proposals of the N O L spare line within this year. While the task force has embarked on a study on the Hong Kong Shenzhen Western Railway link connecting Hongshui Q and Shanghai with a view to completing the first stage study within the year. In terms of road infrastructure, the construction works of Route Six are in full swing. Upon its commissioning in twenty twenty six, the journey time between Changguan Town Center and Yamate interchange is estimated to be substantially reduced from about sixty five minutes to about twelve minutes. The Civil Engineering and Development Department is taking forward the construction of the Changguan Lam Tian Tunnel as well as the connecting cross bay link Changguan at full steam to commission the two projects in tandem this year. In response to the progressive development in northwest new territories, the government plans to complete a series of road infrastructure projects in stages from twenty thirty one to thirty six to enhance the internal and external connectivity of the area. Among them, the investigation study for Route eleven, the section between Yunnan and Northland Town commence in September last year and the engineering studies for Timun Bypass, Qingyilentou link and widening of Yunnan Highway section between Lamte and Tongyan Sanchu are being conducted in parallel through block allocation with a target to commissioning the entire group of major roads progressively as early as possible. On the other hand, the government has also been closely monitoring the traffic needs in New Territories East. We could set the scheme of the Trunk Road T four project in November last year and will take forward the project expeditiously to help relieve the traffic in Shatin District. In addition to the timely implementation of planned road projects, we will proactively explore the feasibility of expanding new road development. We are conducting the strategic studies on railways and major roads beyond twenty thirty to explore the layout of territory wide railway and major road infrastructure and conduct preliminary engineering and technical assessments for the alignment and supporting facilities in order to ensure that the related planning will complement or even reserve capacity to meet the overall long term development needs of Hong Kong, including northern metropolis development strategy. We plan to consolidate the preliminary study findings and commence consultation in the second half of the year. On the other hand, the Transport Department has commenced the traffic and transport strategy study in December twenty twenty one to map out traffic and transport visions for Hong Kong and compiling a relevant strategy blueprint with a planning horizon up to twenty fifty. The strategy study is expected to be completed within twenty twenty five to establish for Hong Kong in the future a more people centric, safe and reliable, environmentally friendly and efficient traffic and transport system to support the sustainable development of Hong Kong and facilitate the seamless seamless transport links within with the Guangdong, Hong Kong, Macau Greater Bay Area. To maximize the efficiency of road space, we have been taking forward the smart mobility initiatives with a view to enhancing traffic management as well as efficiency in road and transport facilities utilization via technology application. Since the one billion dollar worth Smart Traffic Fund has commenced invitation of applications on the thirty thirty first of March twenty twenty one, it has been well received by industry and research institutions. As of now, we have approved a total of fourteen applications involving a total of about eighty million dollars. Other smart mobility initiatives, including the completion of replacement of new generation on on street parking meters and implementation of seven automated parking system having taken forward as planned. In addition, to facilitate the gradual rollout of free flow tolling system or F F T S that government told tunnels from the end of this year, the Transport Department plans to issue toll tax to vehicle owners starting from the middle of this year. Implementing F F T S will provide the essential infrastructure for congestion charging so that the government can charge different tolls at different time periods based on the prevailing traffic conditions. We will consult the Legislative Council and the public on the preliminary proposal this year. With regard to public transport in view of the impacts of the fifth wave of the pandemic on the local economy, between May and October, we will temporarily lower the threshold for the public transport fare subsidy scheme from four hundred to two hundred dollars and increase the monthly subsidy cap from four hundred to five hundred dollars. It is estimated that the scheme will benefit some three point eight million commuters per month during this period. The government continues to consolidate and enhance Hong Kong's position as a regional logistics hub. The pilot subsidy scheme for third party logistics service providers which amounts to three hundred million dollars and has been set up for encouraging the logistics industry to enhance efficiency and productivity through technology application. It has been operating smoothly since its launch in October twenty twenty. As of now, we have approved a total of about eighty six million dollars for one hundred thirty six projects. The government is also actively identifying sites for supporting modern logistics development with the logistics site in Kuicheng already put up for sale to public tender on the twenty fifth of March and attend the invitation will close in mid July. The task force formed under the Hong Kong Maritime and Port Board has completed its study of further tax concession proposals and recommended to provide half rate tax concession for specific shipping commercial principles, namely ship managers, ship agents and ship brokers with a view to attracting these businesses to base in Hong Kong. The government is now working on the legislative amendment exercise and we target to introduce a relevant amendment bill to let go in the first half of the year. Meanwhile, through the task force on smart port development form under the H K M P B, we are working with the trade on the concrete proposals to drive the development of smart port. The proposal is conducted to further enhance port efficiency and reducing cargo handling time and costs through streamlining and optimizing the multi party coordinated processes electronically. As far as aviation is concerned, the central government supports Hong Kong in enhancing its role as an international aviation hub under the National Forty Five Year Plan. As such, the government will continue to support Airport Authority, Hong Kong in proactively taking forward projects that will transform the Hong Kong International Airport into an airport city, including the three runway system project which is currently proceeding in full swing. The automated car parks for use by self driving visitors from Guangdong and Macau and the airport city link connecting the airport island and Hong Kong Boundary Crossing Facilities Island with airport autonomous transport system, et cetera. In preparation for the commissioning of the third runway this year, the flight check for the third runway has commenced in March, marking another important milestone for the three runway system project. The government will continue to support A H K in developing sea air intermodal cargo transshipment service between Hong Kong and Dongguan and to liaise with the relevant mainland authorities on A H K's equity injection into Zhuhai in accordance with market principles as well as cooperating with Guangdong Province over the development of a high end aviation industrial cluster in Zhuhai to achieve greater synergy between the two airports and complementary development between Hong Kong and Zhuhai. This would consolidate Hong the Hong Kong International Airport status as an international aviation hub. Honorable Chairperson, we are grateful to members for their interest in transport and logistics affairs. My team and I will be happy to answer questions from members. Chairman, I have done my best to complete my speech efficiently. I would first read out the order of members who want to speak. I believe the first seventeen members will get to speak. For the subsequent members who still want to speak, I would look at the progress. First, Mr. So Chiang Wen, Mr. Kitson Young, Mr. Wai Lau, Mr. Michael Tian, Dr. Loi Kau, Mr. Frankie Ye, Mr. Lam Chansing, Mr. Yu Parkler, Mr. Andrews Lam, Mrs. Chan Si Hong, Mrs. Regina Ye, Dr. Han Ye Hung and Mr. Lee Shang Kang. Mr. So, please. I'd like to ask about T H P zero one nine. Mr. Chan, I'd like to thank the government for their efforts in coordinating with the mainland government on the mutual connectivity of facilities, and this is certainly very important for Hong Kong. As for the extension of the East Rail Line to Shenzhen Lo Hu, you said you are still exploring the proposal and the task force is following up on the issue. For East Rail Line during peak hours, the it is at full capacity and passengers are crammed full in the compartments. If the East Rail Line is extended to Shenzhen and Lo Hu, it will see even more passengers. After the next phase of shut into central link is commissioned, the capacity of our current facilities will be exhausted. So I'd like to know what plans are in place to tackle this problem. Before you answer the question, I'd like to point out that your suggestions of introducing more trains or increasing service frequency are no longer possible. Twelve car trains have been replaced with nine car trains, which actually leads to a reduction in capacity. It means that each train, the train capacity which which used to be three thousand seven hundred and fifty has been reduced to two thousand eight hundred and forty. During peak hours, service frequency is three minutes. And you said that once the Tumma Line was fully commissioned, the burden on the East Rail Line could be ease. But since the Tumma Line was commissioned, we have not seen any improvement to the East Rail Line. So what plans do we actually have? And in terms of transport planning, you should think about how you divert traffic for the East Rail Line. It is already at full capacity. If it is extended to Shenzhen Lo Hu, you need to think about the additional traffic created by the next phase of shut into central link. So are you placing priority over railway revenue without regard to the capacity? Thank you very much.
Seventeen members each would be allotted four minutes. Mr. So has already spent three minutes. Will you make it brief, Secretary? On the extension of the East Rail to Lo Wu, the task force is looking into this. And it's not a decision that's going to be individually decided by Hong Kong as to the diversion and the carrying capacity that defer to Mr. Chen Chairman. For the East Rail Line during peak period, prior to the Tumma Line being operational, the Taiwai to Kowloon Town is the busiest section with the commissioning of the Tumma Line. There is some diversion effect because some passengers have already changed at Taiwai. So from Taiwai to Kowloon Town, the the patronage has dropped significantly in twenty seventeen on the section, the busiest period. We had fifty seven thousand eight hundred passengers at the busiest period. As since the commissioning of Tumma Line in June, thirty percent of the passengers have been diverted to Tumma Line and they don't have to go to Kowloon Town via the East Rail Line. And the passengers have substantially reduced. Before Covid, it is busiest. The number of passengers has dropped from fifty seven thousand eight hundred to thirty thousand one hundred. That this is a significant decrease for the Shatin Central Line. Once the cross harbor section is commissioned, the number of passengers will increase, but we have already planned for the passenger increase. And with the conversion to nine car train, we should be able to maintain the service. Please save some time for the officials to address a question. Mr. Chow Sui Chong. Chairman, thank you. Secretary. I'm going to refer to my question, oh four one T H P T oh four one. Secretary, I'm not sure how much you know about the plight of the bus drivers. They are on meager pay. They work for long hours and they are on receiving end of complaints and abuses. As you probably aware, some passengers are discontented with the government or they may be discontented with the bus company and they would be hurling abuse at the bus captains. Our bus captains are working under tremendous pressure. They're behind the wheels, are taking a hundred or so passengers with them, and this is an undesirable situation. I hope that the secretary would take these rare opportunities to discuss the franchise and impose certain conditions. And the reply, there is no such signal that Mr. Secretary. Have you really tried in the cause of negotiation brought pressure to bear on the bus operator regarding the plight of the bus drivers? Also, the bus captains are facing thousands of passengers and they are exposed to the risk of infection. Will you be offering any anti pandemic allowance to them? Secretary, Chairman, about occupational safety and health of the bus drivers. We are just as concerned even the absence of any franchise negotiation since twenty eighteen. We have already started looking at the working hours, the rest hours on the part of the bus captains. Mr. Law can send a supplement in a moment during the pandemic. Or when we review the franchise, we will certainly discuss the matter with the franchisee. Madam Law, madam law, is going to think to add, Commissioner. During the negotiation over the franchise, we certainly would be concerned by the occupational safety and health of the bus captains. This remains the key element. The negotiation is still going on. I'm not a liberty to disclose the details here, but as the secretary said a moment ago, the bureau is represented on the board of the bus operators at the monthly or by monthly board meetings. We hear the aspirations in relation to working hours and specific on the specific details, we would bring this up with the bus operators. Like there is a question of the the temperature in the cabin. It is too too stuffy, too hot. We did bring them, bring this up. And also the bus route, what, how how long a prior notice should be given to the bus captain before they are assigned to a route? We also brought this up at the board meetings. The rest time on the part of on the part of the bus captains, the facilities at the bus terminal. We also follow up on this at the board meetings. Mr. Chow, you can rest assured this remain the key element. Mr. Kitson Young. Chairman, thank you. Oh. Oh, one, seven, five. Illegal parking is pretty serious in Hong Kong. And that that stems from the shortfall of parking spaces. This problem stems from the Hong Kong Planning Standard and Guidelines. There were some problems there in Hong Kong according to the formula. Can we increase the the number of car parks by thirty percent for subsidized housing? Will you be increasing to one to one hundred in terms of the likelihood vehicles so that the the residents would be in a position to use some of these parking spaces? The moment is one to seven for the property housing. Many of them are working as a likely vehicle driver. One. Oh, oh, six. That's about the Chok Yun North Estate and the the pedestrian walking, the the network. Is one the support of the district council. Of course, that met with some objection. I know the law of the objections have been handled or addressed. Will the administration be liaising with the objectors and deal with the issue on the basis of land swap in order to come up with a better solution? Also, won't I seen M T R Station X C C near Tai Sing Street? I think this is a wonderful proposal, although the district council objected to this. I think, however, the administration should come up with a better model. Oh, five, one, four. Can we start from Napoleon Estate? And 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 the route that lock for a state that was facilitate the residence in Kun Tong and won't I sin? So when you design the 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 route, would you consider this proposal, Secretary? Thanks very much. Parking spaces for the likelihood vehicles and the bus route deferred to Madam Law. And Mr. Chen will address the pedestrian route. The parking spaces, we have updated the the formula on the basis of single site, multiple use. We have identified twenty projects that can provide fifty one hundred parking spaces in the coming years. And with single site, multiple use, we're going to have the automated parking system. We have done the planning and we will have regard to the capacity of the road. Perhaps Madam Law can address the question first. Chairman, thank you. Like the secretary said, in August last year, the plan D has already updated the Hong Kong Planning Standard and Guidelines. The member referred to four to seven car parks that that has increased to six to nine. And like the member said, we can make available more parking spaces to switch to alleviate the needs. That some developers expressed difficulties in previous sites will have already set up a working group together with bureaus and departments and the developers. I was seeking to increase the number of parking spaces as to commercial parking spaces. We have been doing quite a lot to increase the number and we can also allow sites for parking at nighttime as well. Mr. Chen, Chairman, a Chok Yun North, the uphill escalator, like the member said, we have contemplated a number of options. We do have some new ideas and then we communicated with the district people. We are enhancing the proposal with a view to amalgamating different ideas to take forward this proposal. We will certainly be bringing the residents up to date on on the latest. As to the East Kowloon Line, I start from Poland to Xiwan Shan. The we face some significant technical problem. I you have to go over a pretty high steep terrain and we cannot have this too too steep. So we should have alignment which can meet the technical challenges and achieve the the same, the original purpose. We're using with M T R C and we will certainly be consulting the members of the public and make available a line, a rail line that can serve the the traveling public best. Mr. Wai Lau. Chairman, the northern metropolis, the secretary said, infrastructure lead lead is the approach. I think this is a good idea. The thing is, some infrastructural development is lagging really far behind for the East Rail Line after the conversion to nine car train. The capacity has been lower than previously now with more population moving into the northern district. The Queen Queens Hill Estate and a north northeast N T developments and so on. I think that the East Rail Line is really beyond this capacity, although we have to tune my line for diversion. But that's only good for the section beyond Taiwai. Well, Shengshui and Fan Link, I mean, the trains are really chock a block full. Northern Link, Mr. Secretary or the T D. We haven't been able to cater for the population intake for Kootong in twenty twenty four. And for Northern Link, the timetable is on night twenty five, twenty six. I don't think that that would be able to cope with the population. And Route eleven on the west, now on the east, we have Tolo Highway. And Route eleven on the west, now on the east, we have Tolo Highway and the Israel Line, the the African test. I think we do need to have a north-south link for better alleviation of the situation. I hope that there would be a proper timetable and I hope that Mr. Secretary or the Commissioner can tell us how you would be able to achieve an infrastructure led approach.
Secretary, thank you, thank you very much for the question. Indeed, in northeast new territories, we will see substantial population growth going forward. We do have plans in place on the overall road infrastructure and in terms of railway development or the north-south corridor. We will deal with this in the strategic studies on railway transcending twenty thirty. I would defer to Mr. Chan on railway development. In terms of the infrastructure led approach, this is the strategy adopted with the northern link. For the N O L project, we have invited the MTL corporation to carry out detailed planning and design. And planning work for areas along that line are being conducted concurrently. In other words, we would not wait till the study is completed before we start planning for the rail line. For Kootong Station, detailed design has started. We believe construction will begin in twenty twenty three for completion by twenty twenty seven. The commissioning date would be similar to the completion of the Kootong Housing Development or Population Intake. What about the both south line? Since the end of twenty twenty, we have started the strategic railway study transcending twenty thirty. And we are starting to formulate proposals under the study. Hopefully, later this year, we can carry out public consultation. And we believe the views we collect will help us enhance our planning. Mr. Michael Tian. This is some question serial number zero four seven oh. For the fares of the MTL. The fare per kilometer is fifteen percent cheaper for Yunnan rest than than Yunnan. So the the fares in the eastern sections are cheaper. It was some, the cost was fully borne by the government and it is operated by the MTRC. The government can lower the rents. The speaker is not coming through. The speaker is not coming through the microphone. If the fair revenue from the East Rail Line is used to subsidize subsidize other lines, it would be akin to subsidizing railway operation with public funds. The MTRC indicated that if the government is willing to provide a subsidy, they are happy to partially reduce the fares. For years, the cross harbor fares in East Rail Line have always been cheap cheaper than the West Rail Link. So why are they complaining if the fares on the West Rail Line come down by fifteen percent? For the Hongshui Q New Town, you will see a population intake of some two or three hundred thousand. They should not have to pay the excessive fares, secretary. Thank you. Under the fair adjustment mechanism, if the MTRC is to adjust the the fares, some, they must fully update their first table. So we need to think about sustainability. We need to rationalize the fares gradually. Instead of government intervention in fares, the approach I mentioned would be more effective. We understand that the MTL Corporation is a listed company, it runs on commercial principles. And meanwhile, we need to think about the affordability of fares to the general public and its proportionality. So we believe that proposal is not appropriate. Mr. Tian, any follow up questions? I'm very familiar with the fair adjustment mechanism. The gap is as much as fifteen percent. You can lower the rents charge on the East Rail Line, why aren't you considering this option? Chairman, you may refer to the government's reply. Fares are established based on commuting distance, this is a fundamental principle, Dr. Lo I call. Thank you. Chairman. I'd like to fall fall on T H B T zero one five. And under RDS twenty fourteen, seven new projects were proposed, complete with road maps and budgets. So the target was that they would be commissioned in phases by twenty thirty one. After the strategy was published in twenty fourteen, no progress was made in the next six years. And subsequently, the Tongchung Line Extension and Two Moon South Extension were announced and later Kootong Station to Northern Link proposal, etc. As for the new East Kowloon Line, South Island Line, West and North Island Line. There is no indication whether they would be pursued. And we are now told that under the Hong Kong twenty thirty plus mission. The strategy study for railways has been touted. We didn't understand why the proposals under RDS twenty fourteen were not materialized as for the Hong Kong Shenzhen Western Link. The construction and engineering sectors are very supportive of the proposal. The secretary said a task force has been set up to explore these projects. So when did the work actually begin and when will results be announced to the public? Of course, for the rail link connecting Shanghai, we look forward to more concrete plans. Thank you very much for the questions. For the Hongshui Q to Shanghai section, that is the Hong Kong Shenzhen Western Rail Link. A task force has been set up and meetings have been held. And the relevant technical group has been formed and they have started work. They would embark on a study on the feasibility of such study. We believe the first phase of the study will be completed by this year. And together with Shenzhen, we will conduct consultation. And once a decision is in place. We will move on to the second phase, that is financial and technical feasibility study. So within the year, we will complete the first phase of the study, that is the strategic study. And then we will move on to the next stage. We support a rail link between Hong Kong and Shanghai. We urge you to expedite your work. Mr. Frankie. I'd like to flop on T H B T zero two seven. First, I'd like to thank the S A L government and mainland authorities for exploring new auctions in land and sea logistics. In terms of cross boundary land freight services, a or limitations have been imposed by the mainland, which seriously affected the flow of goods across the border. If this continues, our role as a transshipment hub could be jeopardized. So in terms of the close link, point to point arrangement, has this been explored with the mainland authorities? And I'd like to follow up on T H B T zero two eight, Hengyi and Huisheng. Two sites have been identified for developing a multi-story complex for container storage and cargo handling and a multi-story heavy goods vehicle car park and modern logistics complex. On according to the landlords, there are usage restrictions in place and that would affect the tender prices. Hong Kong lacks car parks and logistics sites. So if this, if the sites are offered to the highest bidders, the prices of the land would escalate and this is not conducive to the development of such industry. So the government should look to lower the prices of these sites so that SMEs would get to develop their logistics businesses. For cross boundary truck drivers, I would offer a response. And then I would defer to the Director on Logistics Development. Given the pandemic, the Guangdong Province has adopted stringent measures recently. Guangzhou has conducted universal testing. So for Hong Kongers entering the mainland, they are subject to stringent requirements. For cross boundary truck drivers, we have done a lot to contain the pandemic. At the land boundary crossing points, we carry out rapid antigen tests for the drivers and on average. We have identified drivers who tested positive. They were successfully intercepted in Hong Kong. But they remain drivers who travel to Guangdong who tested positive, so that explains the concerns.
Let me say, except we made the proposals to the mainland that there will be a closely operation for local truck drivers. And I defer to Madame Chong to respond to the land issue. This Christina Chong. It's about the site for logistics in Chengyou Quai Chong. We are working on the basis of the land sale program. Like Mr. Yik said. We do impose a restriction on the land use there and we hope that the trade would be taking full advantage of these plots of land. Mr. Yik referred to the assistance rendered to the support of medium sized logistics company other than land supply. We do have other measures to to help these companies in interest of time, I won't bore you with many details here. I just reminded that there are ten more members on the list. I think I can fit in Mr. Eric Yim, Mr. Stan, the Mr. Holden Chow and other members may not have the opportunity. Mr. Lem Chan Singh. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Secretary, I've got three questions. Head one five eight refers to the fact that the T H B is monitoring the bus operators to install all the safety features in twenty eighteen. Unfortunately, we had the tragedy in Taipu and a committee was set up and a report was produced three, four years on. What recommendations in the report have been implemented about these safety installations? Including the guidelines or the working hours of bus captains. We are concerned about this and we don't really want to see any more tragedies happen. And also the three R S, the Third Runway System. The administration is liaising with the mainland and Macau air traffic authorities, work out arrangement. I am more concerned about the manpower, we have sixty seventy thousand people working at airport. By the time we reopen the border, plus some the development of the VR S, we're going to see the size of manpower up to one hundred thousand, I I can see automation being the way to go, but are you going to retrain the ground staff? Or what sort of job openings will be needed for the future development of the airport? And what sort of training would there be? And oh, oh, one, T H B T O O one about the registration for the vehicle mechanics and vehicle maintenance workshops. And what is the manpower training there? Will the training be including the the E V mechanics, the electric vehicle mechanics as well? Thank you. I defer to Mr. Peng Yu Hong to talk about the mechanic, Mr. Jay, to talk about the training for the airport staff. And Madam Law, I will talk about the bus operators and hardware and software there. Yes, Chairman. If I may respond to the question about the vehicle mechanics. In twenty twenty, I mean, we have the
In 2020, I mean, we have the E V popularization roadmap. And this will be ramped up pretty quickly. Now, in this registration program, we have liaising with the trade, the academics and the owners association about the scheme. At the Committee on Vehicle Maintenance, we have set up a subcommittee to talk about the registration of the electric vehicles to see whether these can be included. So that we can cater for the E V maintenance. Thanks, please. Mr. Lam. Both the manpower for the aviation sector and the training thereof. We have the Aviation Institute. Since 2017, we have been training up the relevant people. One hundred eighty thousand people have already taken part in the program. Mr. Lam expressed concern about the manpower lead in the lead up to the three R S. These institutes, some training, the relevant staff and also offering all the job training. That we're going to be developing an airport city. What sort of manpower would be particularly needed? The A A is currently conducting a study together with the airlines and the ground staff or the ground support operators to work out the manpower need in order to roll out the relevant training programs. So from now on, we will be progressively training up the relevant level of manpower to cater for the manpower demand as a result of the operation of the three R S. Right? There are any questions on the dresser, please address in writing. Chairman. Oh, four oh seven is my question. The airport authority said that the fees and charges will be eased and to ease the burden of the aviation sector. It would be a long time before the, the flies are resumed to normal. Now, the threshold is unreasonable and scientific for the cycle breaker system. There are nine flights that have been suspended since April 1st. It would be hard for the airlines to be in operation. It would be hard for the returnees. And this is causing trouble to the hotel sector. And the aviation status is in danger. There were five flights where there are three positive cases, three with five. And there, there is a flight that doesn't comply with a five nine nine H plus a positive case. Now, with this low threshold, is it a question of the inconsistency of the C T level? Or is it a case of re-positive patients and testing positive again? Or what? Since April, the number of flights has been hovering at a pretty low level. Let's take today, for instance, there are seventeen flights touching down in Hong Kong. Two long haul, fifteen short haul, there were eleven flights are flying out. As the IATA is saying that Hong Kong is a little off the map. And there are many long haul flights and the skipping Hong Kong. It shows that Hong Kong's aviation status is really diminishing in importance. A lot of flies that would be going via Singapore and Tokyo before they would be coming to Hong Kong. How soon will the T H B rationalize this cycle breaker system in the light of the actual situation? Would this be reviewed every fortnight? Is there any timetable, any roadmap for the review? Now, this is question number one. Second, the Hong Kong International Airport is facing fierce competition. Not only should we pay attention to the cargo flies, we have, we have to pay attention to the passenger flights as well. And the, the number has been diminishing dramatically. Does the A A or the government have any plan to lure the airlines and to resume their operation in Hong Kong like normal? Right? It's been three minutes or so. Secretary, please. Thanks very much, Mr. Perry Yu, for expressing concerns about Hong Kong's status as an aviation hub and the challenges. Indeed, the cycle breaker system is intended to guard against any importation of cases. And this is important threshold that we have the threshold of three positive, coffee positive cases. That that's, that's a stringent approach. But when the situation is coming back to normal, we are liaising with the health authorities, not least the F X P to review the situation. We will send a review of the, the situation. It is, after all, a matter of public health in guarding against infection. Mr. Tony J, Chairman, thank you. Chairman, two replies, I'd like to follow up on oh five one, T H B oh five one about the smart transport fund. That the P C Productivity Council is the secretary for the fund, for this smart traffic fund. And they are charging fifteen percent of the budget for administrative fee. And this is pretty high as a level. Now, the, we are providing professional services. I mean, the ministry fee normally would be just one or two percent. And my question is, the Productivity Council is the secretary of the Smart Traffic Fund. What does this work entail? And also, as of end of February, that eight million dollars have been dispersed in terms of funding amount. So how much was it in terms of administrative fee? Now, that's my question, number one. Second, T H B forty-two. I'm concerned about the parking spaces according to the reply for new development in August, twenty twenty-one. You have amended the Hong Kong Planning Center and Guidelines. The new development would be on the basis of these and new guidelines. What about existing developments if they run short of parking spaces? Does the administration have any other standards? What measures to adopt to increase the parking spaces? When you formulate these guidelines, have you considered the vehicle registration? Were you trying to tie in with the availability of parking spaces? Secretary. Right? I defer to Madame Ho. The better law, right? In August last year, we have amended the H K P S G for a new residential development that they will follow these guidelines. So for buildings under construction, they would be on the basis of the existing standards. If the site allows the developers to increase the number of parking spaces and, and if this is justified, if this can be compensated by the traffic, we would encourage that to happen. We have the latest technology. And we have the semi-automatic parking technology available. If the developer is interested, if there is such a demand, we would be encouraging this to happen as well. For things that have already been planned, work has already got underway. And i- if we will have to dig deeper, excavate deeper, they may, they may present some problems.
As for the smart traffic fund, the fifteen percent cap corresponds to our administrative costs. As of March, eighty million dollars of funding have been approved across fourteen projects. I do not have a breakdown on the administrative costs, but these, for these fixed costs, the Hong Kong Productivity Council had to hire staff in the initial phase. Fair often, we have to work with the Hong Kong Productivity Council to help the applicants. So a lot of work is involved. We will continue to exercise some oversight on the administrative costs incurred by the Hong Kong Productivity Council. Mr. Andrew Lam. I'd like to follow up on replies zero four three and zero four four, which are both about smart mobility. As for the electronic road pricing program under replies zero four four, it, according to the reply, it will be implemented at a timely juncture based on the economic conditions. I'd like to know what the specific criteria are. We hope that the pandemic will be over soon and our economy will rebound in a year or two. So I'd like to know when this would be implemented. Reply zero four four is about real-time information on parking space and the number of operators who took part, went from two hundred and twenty to five hundred and ten. But it still represents a very small portion of all car parks. As for short-term tenancy agreements and new land leases, this provision would be introduced. But there are a lot of existing leases that cannot be modified. Such, how can the government encourage or incentivize some more operators to take part? Thank you very much. I would first address the question on electronic road pricing and then Ms. Law will answer the question on parking. We had a pilot's scheme on electronic road pricing in Central. But like we said, at the end of the year, we will implement the free flow polling system. And we are going to introduce a polling platform, which would form the basis for congestion charging in the future. Once the hardware and software are in place, we conducted a test in Central. We saw that the measure could be adopted smoothly in Central. So after the F F T S is implemented, it will be feasible to implement electronic road pricing. So we will adopt this in a gradual manner. Ms. Law? In July twenty eighteen, two hundred and twenty public car parks provided parking vacancy information. And now the figure is five hundred and ten. This corresponds to the number of public car parks instead of parking spaces. Of course, there's still a lot of room for improvement. The owners of private car parks are mainly developers. And our negotiations have been smooth and they are willing to provide more car parks that offer parking vacancy information. We just completed the territory-wide replacement of on-street meters. We have nearly ten thousand new generation parking meters. So the parking vacancy information could be accessed through our Hong Kong e-mobility app. So our work has been ongoing. Next question. Dr. Wendy Hong. Thank you. Secretary, in your slideshow, you said that together with Guangdong Province, Hong Kong has fostered an aviation cluster in the Greater Bay Area. I object to such plans. Hong Kong already owns a high-end aviation cluster, including aircraft maintenance, research and development, training of aviation talent. And now in Zhuhai, we are trying to create a high-end aviation cluster. So are we relocating our aviation industries yet? Why don't we develop our own aviation cluster in Hong Kong for aircraft maintenance? It is a crucial part of aviation and it promotes the supply chain management for aircraft parts and and it creates economic benefits and would foster the development of our industries. I understand their issues such as recruitment, but if you are trying to, but your mental mentality means that young people will have less and less options. I agree that Hong Kong should work more closely with Guangdong on aviation. Wish through collaboration, we should reinforce our own aviation cluster. If a cluster is being developed in Zhuhai, how can, how would Hong Kong benefit? So I hope the government can dispense with this mentality because it would jeopardize Hong Kong's industries. We should focus on the difficulties faced by our industry and seek to reinforce our industries instead. Thank you very much. I'd like to explain what an aviation industry cluster means. Some, this is one of the strengths of Hong Kong. But Hong Kong does not have a part to play in certain industries, such as the manufacturing of aircraft parts in South China. There are no manufacturing operations for aircraft parts. If we create a cluster, we can foster manufacturing of such parts in Southern China. And that would be a new development for Southern China as a whole. So that would not jeopardize the development of the related industries or trades in Hong Kong. Why can't the manufacturing of aircraft parts take place in Hong Kong? We are talking about reindustrialization. We are talking about the promotion of I N T. And we are trying to diversify our industries. This could be a driver for Hong Kong. This could create synergy with our existing industries. So I suggest the S A L government to develop the manufacturing of aircraft parts in Hong Kong. Chairman. In terms of aircraft maintenance and inspection in Hong Kong, it takes place at Hong Kong International Airport. Major maintenance exercises would be conducted elsewhere. So Major maintenance exercises would be conducted elsewhere, so uh the two. And go hand in hand. And um I think we can reinforce our industries while fostering collaboration with Guangdong. Please some follow up on another occasion since a number of members are still waiting to speak. Mister Chen Xiaohong, I'd like to follow up on a question I asked. T H B T zero zero nine, which is about the establishment of a railways department. With the. High turning demand on railways, we need a dedicated department to foster the development of railways. The proposed railways department. Um will cost a substantial um sum. All along, the government has only explained what the railways department is for instead of coming up with some concrete pledges. Most railway projects in Hong Kong were taken up by the M T R C, which is a listed company instead of government department. The government should explain the proposal properly to garner greater support for a railways department. If the proposal is endorsed by Let's Go. How um what improvements could be achieved by the new railway supplement in providing oversight? And enhancing railway services and what kind of results can we expect? I'd like to follow up on T H B T zero zero one. The government will explore the introduction of a mandatory registration system for vehicle mechanics. And vehicle maintenance workshops. To um allow users to receive safe and reliable maintenance services. The government indicated that they are working with the Hong Kong Productivity Council. In constructing a multi-story vehicle maintenance workshop. And the first phase of the study was completed and the M S D has proceeded with the second phase of the study. But we do not know when general decide design guidelines for multi-story workshops would be published. I think um. Many people have a love-hate relationship with these maintenance workshops. Some they provide useful service, but they. Sometimes create safety concerns or lead to obstructions. How can the government tackle the lack of vehicle maintenance workshops in Hong Kong? Thank you very much. Mister Peng will offer a response on vehicle maintenance and I will address the questions on railway development. As well, study to um set up vehicle vehicle maintenance workshops in multi-story buildings some. The first stage consultancy study was completed in the third quarter of twenty twenty one. We drew reference from overseas experience in establishing um. Multi-story buildings for V M Ws we looked at. Arrangements and requirements like workshop, design, distribution, etc. This second-stage consultancy study. Would be completed by the end of this year. We would review the recommendations from the first um baseline study. And we will see whether overseas experience could apply to Hong Kong. On the other hand, we would also consult the trade. To see whether their needs could be satisfied through such buildings. After the study is completed. Guidelines would be published or developed for the trade.
Chairman, about the railways department of the twenty ninety-four post one hundred. One hundred eighty-four will be transferred from the highways and fifty-nine from the M S D. Um it's gonna cost us forty billion dollars of for the staff cost. Now, this is important for Hong Kong and the sustainability. Like other members said. There are so many rail lines and they have to be built. And this would also release a lot of land for potential developers. We need to have the manpower to monitor the railway developments from the design. All the way through to the end of the project. So from the beginning to the end. Um we will be creating values that it would be far greater than than the um resources that we put in. That this is an important mode of transport for people's commuting. And many people are really enjoying the commuting by rail. This is Virginia. Right about the railways development, I think um. Will have to wait for the uh new S T H. Uh to decide, had to be appointed by the new chief executive, that that the project has not been approved. Now, my question is about the um. Concession, the the two dollar concession for the citizens, the age threshold is lower to sixty years of age. Uh the it's costing us two billion dollars in twenty-five, twenty uh sixty. Um it's gonna cost us seven point five billion dollars because of the aging demographics. This is really quite a lot. According to the social welfare department for care homes and daycare centers. It's costing us fourteen billion dollars. But the in this fifth wave, obviously, how horrendous the the situation is. And for the elder homes, ninety-eight percent of the the senior citizens got infected with Covid. And fifty-six percent of the staff members got infected. We have lost a lot of senior citizens. Now, we are facilitating the senior citizens between eight or sixty and sixty-four. And when they get older, they also need the care homes in twenty-five, twenty-six. We're gonna spend um. Seven point five billion dollars. How to address this particular problem? And the senior citizens are riding on the long-haul bus routes for short journeys. But that that's some idea from the L W B, that is a two-dollar fare concession. Uh it has to do with the the tran- transport fare, but the decision was taken by the L W B, not the T H B. Mrs Ip reminded us that um the railways department is um. Proposed in the policy address, we need to do the consultation. We need the endorsement of the council for this to happen. This is it. Well, this is a policy from the L W B, but how to address the problem of the elderly people? Um riding. Uh long-haul route for short journey. That the cost is gonna go up from two billion to seven point five billion dollars. That the seniors and citizens get two-dollar concession and they they're very happy, but I think you have to give us all the statistics. While I have a word with the S L W and supplement the information. What the care homes, and they're getting fourteen billion dollars. And but for this scheme, it's costing seven point five billion dollars. I've got three more members. I think we have to extend the meeting a little bit. And next, Doctor Tang Yeh-Hung. Thank you, Chairman. The uh zero two zero. I'm concerned about the the smart port and development. In Shanghai and Ningbo, uh they 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 have some smart port development. Has the government considered these? Examples. From the reply, it says that um the study. Uh we cover the digitization of the port. I mean, this is a very brief reply, and this is an important subject. And the. I think that we we are going to increase on the productivity in twenty seventeen. Uh the government has come up with the blueprint. Now, we need to have a smart port and also to enhance our international maritime status. And this is in the fourteen-five-year plan. I think we have to get on with this. So does the government have any plan to incorporate the smart port? Into the development of the smart city task force and how soon are you going to be able to come up with a detailed proposal? Has the government studied the smart ports in other parts of the world? And also on the East Calan rail line, the East Calan traffic congestion is very serious. And as um the residential developments are taking in population. This issue is taking on a greater urgency. In answer to some of the questions, in order to overcome the problems. The M T R C is trying to improve the design. That this was was put forth in twenty fourteen, it's been around for a long time. And in Chongqing, other cities, they also have hilly terrain. And they must have similar experience. And the administration or the M T R C, have they studied? Uh in the the examples of other other parts some of the mainland and learn from them. Secretary, thanks very much. Uh Doctor Tan raised the question. I defer to Madam Chong. Uh to talk about the first question and my other colleague, I will address the other part of the question. It's about a smart port. We have already set up a task force on the smart port under the Maritime. And Port Council, and we will be resorting to various means to collect. The experience in other parts of the world, and we will be conducting a very detailed study. And work is in hand at the moment. That's because how we can help Hong Kong develop as a smart port in this task force. We are conducting some studies. And. We will be collaborating with relevant organizations to to take on with the studies. And we will also be liaising with the the trade. Thank you. I any further response? Thank you, Doctor Ten. Uh East Calan Line. Uh we can see the technical problems with regard to the East Calan Line. Also, together with M T R C, we are discussing the best way forward. And we will have regard to the experience of other parts of the world. And to build this rail line on a hilly terrain. It takes a little bit longer time, however. The M T R C is currently studying some feasible ideas. If we can identify a proposal that would be suitable for Hong Kong, then we will be getting on. With the consultation. I thank you, Chairman. Next, Mr. Lee Chan Kung.
Chairman, thank you. T H B T oh two six, and there's a question by Mister Frankie Yip. Uh about the illegal carriage of passengers for hire or reward. According to the reply in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Under forty-nine and nineteen enforcement figures. Uh respectively, were registered forty-nine, was very small, but in twenty twenty-one, the numbers dropped by more than half. Uh to nineteen, according to the trade. Every single day, we we get to see a lot of private vehicles. And that carrying passengers for hire or reward illegally. Uh the administration said they were enforced the law, but we end up with forty-nine and nineteen in twenty twenty. And twenty twenty-one, less than seventy, put together. And there are tens of thousands of vehicles and they're engaging in these kind of illegal activities. My question for the administration is, how can you effectively. Combat these kind of illegal carriage of passengers to got against the the problem. And oh, five-two, there's parking spaces for commercial vehicles. Now during a non-school hours, some the schools should be opened for parking by the commercial vehicles. I support this idea. Now, for the school coaches. We have a thousand or so schools, only thirty-two schools are taking part in this scheme. Secretary, my question is. If the school buses don't have to be parked on the road and. And the the course will not be passed on to to the students. And send it, uh they they would, I mean, the parents, I would see the the fees and charges are reduced. As a result of the the coaches being parked inside the school. Secretary, thanks very much. Illegal carriage of passengers for hire. We shouldn't just look at twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one numbers in Hong Kong during Covid. And there is so much to do. We do have to call priority in our work. Also, at the transport panel, we've already told members that we will be stepping up enforcement. Uh for illegal carriage of passengers for hire illegally. In revamping the taxi trade, and this is one of the areas that we are contemplating. For school buses are being parked inside the school campus, we welcome that and we are promoting that. As well, the schools will allow this to happen, whether they have any particular challenges or any considerations. I think the school authorities will have to consider this thoroughly. If they, there are. Uh special circumstances that 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 would present difficulties, I don't think we can impose this on the schools. And the vacant space made on the cell be able to accommodate the the coaches safely. Or one of these, this will be in conflict with other activities in school. We're not sure about that. But if Mr. Lee can refer to us, the the situation or the cases, so we can liaise with the Education Bureau. Last member, Mister Kim Kong Eric Kim. Chairman, thank you. Uh oh two nine. Uh also about the smart port issue. According to the reply and also from the secretary. There is a task force on smart port that is promoting the development in this direction. And they are looking at the pulse in the G B A as well. That the trade is not just concerned about progress of the study, they are also concerned about how soon the proposals can be rolled out. According to, I mean, in considering these smart parties. Will the government subsidizing the investment in this area in order to incentivize the the trade to make more investment?
And also um the development of the facilities should be incorporated. Um the warehousing, the smart warehousing is something that that should also be considered.
On the other hand, smart port development of Hong Kong. Should collaborate with the leading ports of the mainland. Hong Kong started developing its ports in the nineteen eighties and um there are no new plans. For developing our ports, so um. It is not um. It doesn't have the conditions to um de- develop um automated facilities, and that is why. Cooperation with external parties would be beneficial, these um. And in ports like um Qingdao, Shenzhen, fully automated for port facilities have been developed. And Hong Kong is lagging behind and there is much we can learn from. In terms of smart port development in Hong Kong. We can work with the um port and transport authorities of the Greater Bay Area. Guangdong, etc., in order to reinforce our status as an international maritime hub, Secretary. As Mister um Chong explained. In terms of promoting the development of smart port. We must learn from smart ports on the mainland and overseas so that we could do better. So um communicating and um making visits to smart ports on the mainland are essential. And we should also think about whether there's any scope of collaboration between ourselves and Guangzhou. As for subsidies. We need to wait till the task force concludes its study. In order to delineate the roles of the industry and the government, but nonetheless, we are happy to take in views. That's all for the session. I'd like to um thank the secretary, officials and all members. The special meeting of the Finance Committee will continue at nine AM tomorrow. Thank you.